Okay, we convened the meeting. Mr. Maurer, we have several questions from people in the audience. Would you, between you and I, see if we can get them covered?
Sure, and maybe I'll start with some of the comments that were made by the board members. Supervisor Mills, you brought up the issue about resiliency centers. One of the policies of the plan was to incorporate by reference the hazard mitigation plan that we worked on with OES, and that's something that we'll continue to update on a regular basis and include resiliency centers. So I'll be working with John on that. Supervisor Toffinelli, you brought up the concern about a fire marshal, and I know that Doug Oliver, the building official, has been working with the fire chiefs.
They can't move back there.
Bring this closer. I know that Doug Oliver, the building official, has been working with the fire chiefs in different districts to try to have a more consistent process, whether it's a county-wide, each district varies a little bit, but that's something that he is working on diligently to try to resolve that issue. So that's something that's ongoing. There were several speakers that talked about the Title 25 and the housing element policies that the board directed us to pursue. I want to assure them we are working on those. That is a high priority for us, and that is already identified by the board as something that we intend to do, and we're working on that. We have a little bit of delay. Those programs were going to be funded by a grant from the state. The grant program was supposed to have been wrapped up by November. They're still working on it right now, and I expect to hear within the next week or two to be awarded that grant to go forward. So then we'll move forward with that. So that already is a priority. It's already identified by the board, so I want to assure them we are working on that. That's not going to be set aside at all.
Approximately when?
I'm hoping by the end of the month that the HCD will have identified that we qualified for that grant. It's not a competitive grant. It was allocated, you know, $160,000 allocated to the county as long as the program qualified. And I just worked last week with, you know, trying to fine tune that, give them the information that they needed to ensure that it meets the criteria.
I guess my question would start with the chair. When will the board be seeing it?
When will the board be seeing it? Well, the first thing would be what was to hold some community workshops. Then the other one was the development of the Title 25 regulations, and I'll be working with Doug on that. I know he's very supportive of that. I don't have a timeframe for you yet on that. Mr. Moore brought up the question about biofuel, and we do have an approved project to do a biofuel project in the Wiltseville area. Unfortunately, that was relying on PG&E purchase of the power that would be generated. And I've met, just last month, with the proponents of that project to look at interim uses of that facility that would be consistent with the permit that was issued. But because of the bankruptcy, PG&E won't commit to the funding or to purchase of the power, and then the funders of that project are unwilling to release their funds without that commitment. So now they're trying to look at interim steps to get that up and running. But no use of the excessive fuels that we have, especially with all of the tree mortality and the fire clearing that's being done, no sense in shipping it to Anderson or Madera County. We want to utilize that here. So that is something that the private sector is pursuing with assistance of the county. Ms. Calaveras, were there other questions that you had noted?
Well, we'll have one on the infill for an urban sprawl. I mean, if he can have a horse on his or animals.
Oh, yes. So the infill would be based on what the land use designations are under the general plan, and as far as Rancho Calaveras is concerned, that's not changing. That was very clear during the general plan hearings with the planning commission, particularly, although I think there was some also discussion here at the board, but it had been pretty much resolved when the special policies for Rancho Calaveras were included in the plan as well as the land use map. That Rancho Calaveras is staying the same. There are areas in the county that are appropriate for, you know, larger rural lots where animals, and that's a part of the draw to those counties, being able to have animals if you want them. You don't have to have a horse, but you can if you want to. But there are also areas where a higher density or intensity use is appropriate. Doesn't mean we're going to be plopping down a fourplex in the middle of Rancho Calaveras. That's not what that land use designation calls for. So wouldn't, don't expect to see changes in Rancho, but there are some, you know, other vacant parcels in, you know, within communities of Valley Springs or San Andreas or Copperopolis, you name it, that are appropriate for a higher intensity use, and that's what we'd be looking for to try to figure out a way to encourage that kind of development. During the break, Supervisor Mills brought up the issue of clustering, and that is something that is allowed today under any kind of development and, you know, possibility under this implementation measure. Well, how do we incentivize clustering? You know, for example, if you have a, you know, a 20-acre parcel that's zoned for 1-acre parcels, you know, you could have 20 1-acre lots. But maybe a more effective use of the property and more cost-effective development would be to have 20 quarter-acre lots with the remaining 15 acres being, you know, an open space parcel or something. So those are the kind of things that can accomplish many goals, you know, resource protection, whether it's biological resources, water resources, as well as reduction in costs of infrastructure. So you don't have to run the water lines and sewer lines and roads as far, and so it reduces the overall costs of that kind of development. It's not for everywhere, but, you know, where an applicant finds that that makes sense for the type of development that he or she wants to do, we should be able to encourage that. And if there's a way that we can incentivize it in ways that make sense for the community as well as for the applicant, then we should be looking at those kinds of solutions.
Just to follow up on that, when you were talking about Rancho Calaveras and staying the same, there was another commenter that brought up that we pulled the Rancho Calaveras community plan out of it, and that's not necessarily what happened. What we did was the CCNRs that were originally in the Rancho Calaveras plan are part of the general plan as it was instated as one of the community plans, correct?
Well, not, the CCNRs are not a part of the plan. The CCNRs still apply to the property. CCNRs are private agreements between the buyer and seller of property, and the county does not get involved in those private agreements. We don't enforce them, but we also consider them when we're looking at some discretionary projects. But as far as, you know, regular review of CCNRs or compliance with the building permit, that's not something that we do. But when we were looking at the land use map and considering including community-specific policies in the community planning element of the general plan, and you were on the planning commission when we discussed Rancho Calaveras, we tried to, and I hope we're successful in incorporating the key policies that made Rancho unique, just as we did with many of the other communities in the county and we intend to do with the remaining communities over time. So starting with Valley Springs and Copperopolis.
Mr. Mutis brought up the septic systems will kill projects with the accessory dwelling units.
Well, I'm not exactly sure.
If I understood your comment, Mr. Mutis.
We were initially under the impression, based on what was going on with the planning commission and the general plan, and then also comments that we, and questions and answers we received in the advisory committee to building, and they had told us that it would not be required to reevaluate septic to put it in ADU. Unfortunately, if you do that, it's going to drive the cost up, and it's going to keep people from doing it. And with facing the 30-foot setbacks that have been forced upon us by CAL FIRE, that's wiping out a lot of your building stock to begin with, and the ADUs may be the only thing you have left to see any kind of infill as far as housing.
Okay, thank you.
I understand now. So about a year and a half ago, we adopted a new ADU ordinance to come into compliance with state law. As we were reviewing that, we found that the review process for an ADU for review of septic systems was more stringent than for a primary residence. That was dropped from that ordinance. Now, you still have to ensure that you meet the basic health standards of connection to public sewer or have an adequate septic system to support an ADU, but we don't have an excessive requirement. It's basically the same requirement you would have of constructing a new residence or expanding. If you've got a three-bedroom house, you're expanding it to a four-bedroom, you may have to increase the length of the leach line, for example. But that's no different than any other construction that would occur, and I think that may be what Mr. Mutis was referring to. Previously, we had a higher level of review process for an ADU than we did for the initial primary residence. That no longer exists.
Okay, thank you. And the last were some of the comments that Mr. Emfesima made. He wanted an evaluation regarding development conditions before we do the map. I thought that was a question I had asked you at the beginning, why we would be doing the map, and he had other items.
You know, the other items that's, you know, on the table as far as, you know, board priority, I, you know.
Okay.
You know, many of those, yeah, we certainly, if that's the desire of the board, you know, we could prioritize those rather than others. Many of them sort of match some of the things I had suggested. The development of a mitigation program for loss of agricultural land, for example. The first step of that is identifying what's the important one, which we're, I recommend that we undertake right away. If the board wants to make that a higher priority, that's certainly within your prerogative to do so. We will be reviewing, you know, development against the new general plan, and so I can assure you that that's part of what we have to do. That's part of our process.
Okay. The last one was the dark sky ordinance.
And that's one of those specific ordinances that we can certainly take up, you know, while we're working on a comprehensive zoning ordinance update. And I know that that was something that, you know, several planning commissioners have mentioned in the past, as being important to them. It's come up many times throughout the hearings on the general plan, and again, that's a policy call by the board of where you want to put that in the hierarchy of measures.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yes, just wanted to throw this out there. This is on page, packet page 17, C4A about private airstrip standards. It's interesting. We do have an active private airstrip in the Copperopolis basin, as you know. As that area intensifies in terms of housing units, I'm sure that there's going to be some desire to not take it out of grass strip but get it into more of a safe working zone. So I just, I don't know where else this would apply in Calaveras County, or there's plans for new private airstrip in Valley Springs or something?
There's one in Wallace right now, and it has residential suburbs around.
Yeah, so just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
Peter, going through your list here that you provided to us, and all the items that you listed as one time, once, and additional ordinances like the dark sky, so forth, I would like to see, as, and you mentioned earlier, about a hybrid plan for zoning code I would like to see the priority of just the zones that we have initially starting is cleaning up all of the vague language that's in these zones that becomes a problem. Just to point out one in residential accepted farming practices. How many times is that, what does that mean? It's become a problem, and I think those type of things need to be cleared up, and we need to be very careful when we're crafting these other ordinances and bringing them forward, that we don't have that vague language in there. It's very upright, straightforward, this is it, and there's no curving around it. It's created so many problems over the course of the years that it's been, some of this language has been in there, and you know that it has, and planning, I mean, the building department knows this too. So if we can just get the board, we can talk about discussing that, at least initially on that hybrid portion that you were talking about, we start with just cleaning up the language that we have in some of these ordinances.
Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Miss, Mr. Maurer, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Quite a few things that were brought up by both the public and everything that I do agree with. You know, one person brought me, brought up to me when we were out discussing during break, the state had cut a lot of the red tape for fire victims when it came to rebuilding, not long after the Butte Fire. I'm not sure if the county fully followed suit with that, but is that red tape still cut out there? And is there a clear path to us beyond, you know, what was discussed on Title 25 of being able to help these people get their homes rebuilt in the burn scar?
So right after, excuse me, right after the Butte Fire, the county adopted an emergency ordinance that provided some streamlining as well as procedures in place to ensure public safety. That became a permanent ordinance a couple of years later, and we have now extended that twice that allows people to live in temporary provisions, you know, on their property. Whether or not it fully cuts red tape is probably debatable. It reduced some. It may have increased some in some other areas to ensure that public safety requirements are met. So it's something we'll probably end up having to discuss again later this year as the timeframe. Right now, we're extending the provision of that ordinance for an additional year each year as we sort of assess how things are going. Given what I heard today, it sounds like there's still a lot of people that are unable because of the issues with PG&E and other reasons to rebuild, which is ultimately, I think, the goal of everyone here, is to allow people to rebuild the property, on their property, rebuild their homes. And, you know, the, some of the things that we will be moving forward on the housing element are intended to address that need. So have we fully cut red tape? No. Have we reduced it? I would like to think so. I'm sure that there are people that would probably say, no, you haven't, but that's the nature of government.
That answers my question. That brings me to the next step is, yes, you are doing the housing element separately from this right now, but it does all, it does all work together.
It all dovetails, yes.
And I did attend CSAC, and I was there when you did a presentation on affordable housing, and, you know, I think LA County was there, right with you?
Right.
And a lot of these issues that are being put forward by the state that I brought up here afterwards when I reported out on the meeting raised prices on costs on building. And some of these, the, these, sorry, excuse me, reaching forward, some of these things that were put in forward in the general plan also do somewhat the same thing. And now the state's going to, saying that they're going to start holding us accountable on putting forward more affordable housing. One way, I mean, we talk about infill. All this has to coincide, because we talk about infill and filling out, you know, buildable areas where it has, where it has the infrastructure to be able to support, you know, development. But we also have areas surrounding those that have been put into resource production, where we're going to actually have people possibly two to one, you know, have to mitigate that by setting so much land aside, which brings up the cost on development and building once again. So maybe as we move forward, maybe some thoughts on some exemptions if they are in the certain areas that are within these areas that could be considered on infill and so on could be part of the discussion as we, as we put forward rewrite this comprehensively. Am I making sense where, where I'm going there?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. That's the kind of detail that we need to get into as we start implementing these programs. You've identified, you know, a dozen or so of things, and we have to drill down into the specifics of how that's going to work and what makes the most sense for Calaveras County and how is it going to balance the competing needs of, you know, different sectors of our economy and the community. You know, protecting farmland is important, but providing housing is also important. How do we balance those competing needs? You know, identifying areas that's not important farmland is sort of the first area. We've identified lots of areas for future development and, you know, in, you know, throughout the county, there's areas that have been identified that this is appropriate because of infrastructure, because of access, because of surrounding land use patterns. This is where we want to see development. Out here, where it's away from infrastructure, it's remote, not appropriate, and so that's why it's designated as forestry or agriculture or something else. And so, you know, that can change over time, and that's the whole point of going back and revisiting this. You know, how are, how are we meeting our housing needs? How are, how is the economy doing? Do we have enough land available for industrial development, for example, or commercial development? Are we getting the retail stores that we hope to be able to support our community here? If not, why? Is it something that county controls or is something that is a broader macroeconomic issue that, you know, we just don't have the population base to support the kind of stores that people would like to see, so they end up driving to Amador or Twomey or Stockton for? So those are kind of things, the bigger picture issues that we need to look at, but to, if we can identify something that says, here's a problem that we've created through our general plan, well, that's when we need to go back and fix it.
I feel like I've been hearing this conversation for 20 years.
I'm sure you have.
It hasn't changed. Mr. Guermendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think as we set our priorities, first off, Peter, you are a workhorse. You get a lot of work done, and I appreciate that. As we set our priorities, I hope that we can maybe move, listen to this conversation, really the ag piece as we deal with mitigations and how that all comes together. We talked about where these, where there's a confluence of concepts that we need to work out together. I think maybe we ought to move the ag up a little bit, because as several people here have already said, without that knowledge, it's pretty hard to do the next steps, especially when we've left it pretty broad in the general plan. So nailing that down, and as we discussed the general plan, you know, we really do need to find that balance, because people move here because of our beautiful county and our viewscapes, and they're tremendous. What we don't want to do is, in an effort to create more housing, destroy the thing that people come here for. So there's a balance to be had, and I think we can achieve that. Hopefully, it won't take 20 years to wrap that up. And also, I look forward as that plays into what are the infill incentives. As we mentioned, we don't know what they are yet, but that's going to be some real creativity, trying to figure out what tools and levers we actually have to achieve that goal. I'm not familiar, and just, I'm glad we're working on Title 25, and I wish, nobody on this board was here in 2016 when we decided not to waive a lot of the fees for rebuilding or figure out some creative solutions. But, you know, in hindsight, it's always 2020, but I really wish we had. But, you know, there were a lot of other overriding considerations as well as plenty of chaos at that time. So, you know, thank you for your work. Let's keep going forward.
Mr. Maurer gave us, identified some of the highest, excuse me, his perception of the highest priorities with the addition of agriculture that Mr. Guermendi just talked about. Are there any that you would like to see removed, added, or modified in any way? We need to give some direction. I'll just start out, I, on the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, I would like to see us, and even though you hire a consultant, if I read your board packet correctly, it's still will take a few years to accomplish that. I would like us to start looking at how we do it. You'd have to work with the CAO in terms of budget and finance and how we would fund it, and the board would need to be reminded of budget time, that that's a priority after the animal shelter. So I think we need to do that. I would like to see the zoning map updated and not wait until the ordinance is done.
Can I just make a comment? Peter, you have that comprehensive zoning ordinance update here as one of the top priorities, but when you, when we opened up earlier, again, and getting back to, you elaborate, you didn't, you never elaborated on what your view of a hybrid was that you were, as opposed to this. Are you talking about a hybrid, just initially get things going and clearing up some things that we have existing, and then while this is going on, the comprehensive? Or what was your, what was your view?
So, yeah, it would be sort of working on both at the same time. So we identify, you know, a handful of very specific ordinance amendments we need to make right away that we can't wait for two to three years on. And, but while we are looking comprehensively at everything, we've also, you know, picked out a couple of key issues that could be addressed in a more immediate timeframe.
So do we need, excuse me, so do we need to add that to this list then as a separate item?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. And how would, how would you like that? I apologize. How would you like that?
Well, maybe a sort of poll of the board would be, you know, is it a dark skies ordinance? Is it, you know, vacation rental? Whatever the issues are that you feel are something we need to address right away, and that's something that I and my staff can work on while the consultant begins some of the early work on the comprehensive update.
Well, some you have, like the vacation rental ordinance is on here.
Yes.
And it has raised, it said, I don't know about all the districts, but it has, in District Three. So what you're talking about, there were some short, that would be short... So what you're talking about, there were some short, that would be short spans of required staff time to accomplish those, to clear up some of the ones that get talked about.
Yes, in comparison with the comprehensive update, it's something we can focus attention on. You know, again, these are controversial issues, it's not gonna be wrapped up in a month, but there's something that we can be working on to, you know, within the next year, get those issues resolved in a more timely fashion than we would if we waited until we had everything together.
Looking and reading this and after our discussion here, there's certain things that I think need to fall in place for us to get the job done properly as we move forward. Like when we talk about countywide zoning map update and then we also talk about the, the agricultural resource that Mr. Guaramendi has brought up and resource, and then even with, if we're gonna consider even exemptions for mitigation impacts from resource production land, we need, we need to get our farmland mapping first. So, so that would be a high priority in my mind so that we could successfully identify what the farmland mapping, where it is and, and then we could start moving forward on, you know, a few of the other things.
Right, and that's why I included that in this list.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, I understand that. And it also would go with, I mean, a lot of these kind of do cross over again, agriculture, oakland, oak woodland mitigation program, resource production mitigation and farmland. So I think those would, you know, you know it better than I do, but I, I think that we're on the right course here. We just have to prioritize it based on what, you know, what should follow what.
Right. So you're recommending that we prioritize what these are? I don't see the need to do that.
I think Peter knows what they need to be, so.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
Right, we're, yeah. But I, I do, I do think the farmland mapping would go up ahead of the agriculture and the other, other issues in my mind.
So these will be moving sort of in parallel. At one point we'll be focusing on this and then there's gonna be a, a gap in the timeframe while, you know, the consultants are doing something or we're waiting on public comment and then we'll focus attention over here. I've got one staff working on one thing and other staff working on something else. So it's not like this gets done and then I start on the next one. We'll figure out a way to spread this workload out through my department using consultants, using other departments, assistants where appropriate and moving the package forward. It won't all come together, you know, some will be, some will take longer than others. We might, you know, have some hiccups along the way when we realize that, you know, trying to work out the details of some issue that becomes much more complex than we initially anticipated. But my intent is that we work on this whole package.
Okay.
But not a package of 100 items, a package of 12 items.
Coming, coming to my point, I would concur with Mr. Guaramendi on making the agriculture a-
One of those.
One of those that are on the higher end of the priority list.
Do any of you have a, oh, Mr. Mills?
Yes, I had a question regarding the special event ordinance update. What was the purpose of doing that, wanting to get that done?
It is one of the issues that we grapple with on almost a daily basis in our office, what's, what's allowed and what's not and what zones it's appropriate. It is, it, it needs refinement. It's now 15 years old. I, you know, we just, we've found through our experience of that, that part of the code is not as clear as we like it to be. It's creating some conflicts in the community and I think it's something that needs to be addressed. And some of the standards, or, you know, there's, for example, you know, you have a venue that maybe has, you know, half a dozen events a year and yet we require paved parking for that. So it doesn't mean we have to make it the same as every other commercial use, but what's, what's appropriate level of access and parking and safety issues that need to be addressed for these kinds of things.
I guess maybe it was a loaded question because down in my area, for instance, we have certain venues that have, every weekend, there's an event. So they're having to come get a permit for each event individually separately where it's the same over and over again. And there's staff time involved in reviewing that, et cetera. So I hope that we would include, without getting into details, include a way that we have these events going in the same place all the time, that we can have maybe a yearly permit or a biannual permit or something like that too.
Right.
We already know where they're gonna be, they've, they've met all the requirements. It's just a matter of all of this paperwork that we generate as a result of these singular event permits. That's part of the problem. Where you've got a unique situation, you'll deal with it on a case by case basis.
Right.
If, if I might add to Supervisor Mills' comments on the event, having read it recently, it is a complete deterrent to anybody participating in it because it's, it's filled with, as you meant, confusion, risk, and so it doesn't surprise me when people, you know, it'd be pretty hard to have any chicken in a barrel in this county, which is a pretty common thing. So I think it'd be good to take a look at it. Otherwise people are just gonna ignore it.
Is there support, is there, is there support for the comprehensive zoning ordinance update and committing budget dollars to that?
I'm pulling board.
I'm pulling the board.
You're gonna start with down there?
I'll start down there. Mr. Guaramendi.
Yes.
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 Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Five yeses on that and I'm assuming that's something you'll work with the C A O on. That's the one that has sort of a big dollar amount now. So with the exception of adding an ag, I don't hear any of the board recommending taking any of these items off the table. As much as I want a dark sky ordinance, when you complete one of these, I'd like to slip it in.
And adding just hybrid.
And that, that's correct. And adding the hybrid that you and Supervisor Toffenelli talked about. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before I close this off? Is there any other direction that you need, Mr. Mauer?
Did you wanna poll on adding the ag and hybrid?
No, I was, I just thought I'd order it done.
I was gonna throw in dark skies then too.
Yeah.
All right.
So as I understand that, yes, you want us to move forward with the comprehensive update, but at the same time, the two items that I identified, the vacation rental ordinance and special event ordinance, we'd be handling sort of separately. We also look at some of those other areas as far as conflicting definitions and bring those, those back at some point in time, you know, earlier than, than later.
Yeah.
On the special events ordinance update, I think there's a couple of issues that may need to be looked at or maybe added to that ordinance when you're giving out permits or writing for, permit for those events is, at least one that I know of that was in my district only had one way in and it was quite a way up a hill and there was no dual access out. And they wanted to have up to 100 people. And if something happened and they were trying to escape, there's only one way in and one way out. So that might, you might wanna look at that as part of adding something to that in the ordinance that it depends on your evacuation reasons if something happens.
I think what, you know, with these individual ordinance, what we would do would be to sort of reach out to the stakeholders, including, you know, fire departments, you know, the other county departments that are affected by any of these types of activities and, you know, those who operate special events or vacation rentals or whatever it might be, and find out, you know, what are the needs, what are the concerns, what are the issues? Whether they're just, you know, I don't have all the answers, I'm not gonna write something. You know, we may end up having another study session specifically about these if we feel that's appropriate. Those are, just, but again, these are, you know, this, this level, we're at 20,000 feet looking down, it's okay, which, which one of these are we gonna approach first? And then we'll, we'll develop a work program for each one of these, these tasks.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, going back to the fire marshal, because I know that Supervisor Toffenelli had brought it up, it's something I've been advocating for a long time and I know that it's difficult to find those, that breed of people. It is a very specialized training process that they go through and some districts have it, others will probably never had it because they won't financially afford it. And so how do we, from our side, assist in being sure that the goals that are met to achieve that with those districts that cannot support a fire marshal, you know, don't need to name names, but it's, that is the glitch right now, is how do we get 4290, 4291 and all of those other pieces resolved when they can't afford a person and they're very difficult? Even the county, we can't find somebody to fill that role. So I'm just leaving it as an open ended question.
That's good, because I don't have an answer for it.
Okay. Mr. Guaramendi?
Madam Chair.
So as I was told by my colleague to my left, take a poll on adding agriculture as recommended by Supervisor Guaramendi. I'll start with Supervisor Guaramendi. I'm assuming he's not gonna change his mind.
I'm.
And he says yes, and Mr. Stopper already said he'd support it, so he's a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Toffenelli.
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway, yes, five yeses on that. And you said there was one more.
Hybrid.
The hybrid, I thought I already made the decision, but I'm having to learn. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stopper?
Sure.
Mr. Guaramendi?
Aye.
Passes on a five vote on that. There's nothing else from your perspective?
I think I've got my marching orders.
Okay. Thank you. We look forward. This was quite an effort on your part and it was, as Mr. Segal has said, quite a challenge to go through this, but it was well done. Thank you. And-
Just wanted to make sure you all had a good night's sleep every night.
Yeah.
We look forward to seeing you next week.
Okay. I'd like to move on to item number five.
Item five is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. So we have a few more applications. The first is for the Agriculture Advisory Committee, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/22 for a District One rep. We have an application from Libby Rader-Casek, she's an incumbent. On the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/20, District One. Matt Brock, the incumbent, has applied. McCollum Hills Cemetery District, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/23, and an application was received from Patricia Yocum, who is an incumbent. And then lastly, on the West Point Cemetery District, two vacancies for terms expiring 12/31/23 and applications for, have been received from Kirk Smith and Brian L. Smith, who are both incumbents.
Okay. Any questions or comments or changes from the board? Any public comments on these appointments? I'll move it back to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Toffenelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a five vote vote. Thank you. I'd like to move to item number six. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for putting that list together.
Um-
Are there any? Go ahead.
Oh. Okay. So item six is from the Clerk of the Board to assign members of the Board of Supervisors to various committees for calendar year 2020. There's a list coming around that shows the current or the past 2019 assignments and then there's a blank form for you to fill in.
Blank form?
So if you'd like, I can-
Does it have anything from Peter in, in corroboration?
I'll better go to Public Works and get an encroachment permit. I'm not sure, is this a new system of, we put in what we want and how?
No. What happens is I read off each one and I tell you who served on it last year, which is on the 2019 list, and then you decide if that's going to remain the same or if you would like to assign, the group would like to assign somebody different to the, to the position. So in some cases, we have one or two representatives and usually they all have an alternate.
Okay.
The, the CSAC was already decided in December, so-
It was, but we revisit it at this meeting as well.
Understood.
So is there any other questions?
I'm gonna wanna get pointed twice.
Okay, I guess I'd like to manage this. Are there any that, any of the supervisors would like to change or modify or drop on any of these committee assignments?
I, I have, I have a couple of requests. I had briefly talked to Supervisor Toffenelli and I offered to take the In-Home Support Services Committee and he said he would take two of my alternate positions, the UMR and the CMC AA positions as alternate, and I will take the lead on IHSS as long as Supervisor Toffenelli's still okay with that.
It was UMR and what?
Yeah, and what?
And CMC, not, not CMC, I'm saying the wrong one. The Mariposa Groundwater Authority.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, that's, sorry, I got the wrong acronym in.
Mariposa Groundwater?
Eastside San Joaquin GSA. That's the one, Eastside San Joaquin GSA.
And I'm good with that, can you?
I'm good with that.
It'd be easier just to line by line?
Yeah, you know, that's usually how we do it so everybody can stay on the same page instead of jumping around.
Okay.
If you'd like to just have everybody weigh in, we can do that, but it, it is kinda confusing.
So you just wanna go, just start the Area 12 Agency and work on down?
Yeah, that's how we usually do it.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
If, if there's no changes, you can just say, no change. But, okay, so for the Area 12 Agency on Aging, right now Supervisor Callaway is the representative and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Fine.
Fine.
Good.
On the Calaveras, Amador, McCollum River Authority, right now Supervisor Guaramendi and Supervisor Mills are the representatives and Supervisor Toffenelli is the alternate.
I'm good.
Calaveras Public Power Agency, Supervisor Toffenelli is the representative and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate.
Fine.
I'm good.
Calaveras Workforce Initiative, we have Supervisor Toffenelli is the representative and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Good.
Central Sierra Economic Development District, Supervisor Stopper is the representative and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate.
I'm good.
Fine.
Good.
Central Sierra Child Support Agency, Supervisors Callaway and Toffenelli are the representatives and Supervisor Guaramendi is the alternate.
Fine.
I'm fine.
Fine.
Children and families- Children and Families First Committee, Supervisor Guaramendi is the representative and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Good.
Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency, Supervisors Mills and Stopper are the representatives, and Supervisor Toffanelli is the alternate.
Good.
Good.
C S A, Supervisor Callaway is the representative and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
Good?
Yep.
No, I don't, maybe, I guess.
Calaveras Council of Governments, Supervisors Mills and Toffanelli are the representatives, and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
I'm interested in possibly moving to a representative position as opposed to alternate.
Knowing how critical wagon trail is through 2020 and maintaining the funding, District Four would like to stay on as a primary for that.
I would like to stay on it also. It's primary. I'm chair right now of that.
We do a lot of work with our federal partners to ensure that the funding is maintained on wagon trails, so when we get to breaking ground in 2021, we won't have a problem. So there's a lot of background work that happens there. Looks like we've got a vote, Supervisor. Madam Chair?
Do you want to put it to vote?
Yeah, I, I would like to put it to a vote.
All right. There's a motion from Supervisor Stopper to take either Mills or Toffanelli's position on the Council of Governments.
Take my position?
Mills or Toffanelli.
How would we do this vote, because it's odd number here.
Well, I mean, that's what you want, that's what you would like. Is there support on the board? I gather from Mills and Toffanelli, there's not. Mr. Guaramendi?
I'm supporting a change.
Okay. I support leaving it as it is.
Debt Advisory Committee, the representative is Supervisor Mills, and the alternate is Supervisor Callaway.
Fine, but there's been no meetings.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would be interested in this, Madam Chair, insofar as working on the building. The ad hoc has sort of given me some insights, and I would like to take that on, assuming there's going to be a meeting on it at some point.
Would you trade something?
What do you want?
What do you got?
I mean, do you, do you care, Dennis?
Well, there's been, you know, I've had discussions with our monitor about it, but there's been no formal meetings.
So...
I don't know if I got anything you want, Dennis.
Or are you willing to give up?
There's nothing, there's nothing really there. That's fine.
So, do you care?
No.
Okay. Mr. Guaramendi, you will be in the position on debt advisory.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then Supervisor Callaway, will you be remaining as the alternate?
Yes.
Okay. East Side San Joaquin G S A, Supervisor Mills is the representative and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate.
That is one of the...
No. Mr. Toffanelli?
That's one of the ones I'd like to...
Possibly pass on to Mr. Toffanelli as the alternate?
Pass on or hand over, trade?
So Supervisor Mills would remain as the...
That's fine. I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, for East Side San Joaquin G S A, Supervisor Mills will remain as the representative and Supervisor Toffanelli will be the alternate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fish and Game Commission, Supervisor Stopper is the representative and Supervisor Callaway is the representative, or the alternate?
I'd like to maintain that.
Yep, fine.
Okay. Hardwood Advisory Committee, Supervisor Stopper and Mills are the representatives, and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate?
It's fine.
Good.
Fine.
I H S S Advisory Committee, Supervisor Toffanelli is the representative and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate. This is one that Supervisor Stopper was willing to take on the representative role.
Yes, ma'am.
And so would Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Remain as, okay. Law Library Trustees, Supervisor Stopper is the representative and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
LAFCO, Supervisors Toffanelli and Callaway are the representative and Supervisor Mills is the alternate?
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Supervisor Stopper, yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. Mental Health Board, Supervisor Guaramendi is the rep and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
McCollum River Association, Supervisor Guaramendi is the rep, Supervisor Toffanelli is the alternate.
I'd like to stay.
Yep.
That's fine.
Motherlode Job Training Agency, Supervisor Stopper is the representative and Toffanelli is the alternate?
Yes. I'm fine with it.
Mountain County's Air Basin, Supervisor Callaway is the representative and Supervisor Mills is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
Mountain County's Water Resources Agency, Supervisor Mills is the rep and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate?
Yes.
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 Excuse me. Mountain Valley E M S, Supervisor Toffanelli is the representative and Supervisor Mills is the alternate?
I'm fine.
Yes.
National Association of Counties, we did not appoint anybody last year, and do you want to keep that with nobody?
Unless we fund it?
We don't fund it. It's not a, it's funded by Health and Human Services. That's where our membership is paid for.
It is funded in, in a way that, that we'd always give that representative more in travel expenses to go to the...
That's correct.
So we do fund it that way.
Do you not want to make an appointment?
Jack, what do you think?
I don't know. I mean, we get a lot of the stuff through our other associations.
I think so.
R C R C and C S A.
Right.
We don't need to go to conferences, 2,000 people.
Gary, what do you think?
Leave it alone.
I'm, I'm leaving it vacant.
Okay.
Yeah, unless somebody really, 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 really wants to. I think we've got it covered.
Do you want me to remove it from the list? Or do you want to have that decision every year?
I think it's good to have the decision.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Have a talk about it.
Okay, so moving on to R C R C. There is R C R C, there is the Local Government Finance Authority, Environmental Services, and Rural Home Mortgage Finance Authority. Those are usually all the same representative and alternate. Representative is Supervisor Guaramendi, the alternate is Supervisor Toffanelli.
I would like to stay.
Yep. Gary?
Dan, are you interested in being alternate?
R C, R C R C. I'll take that.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
You'd like a minute?
No, I think I will. I might attend a couple of those.
Okay. Sierra Nevada Conservancy, Supervisor Mills is the rep and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
Solid Waste Task Force, Supervisor Stopper is the rep and Supervisor Mills is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
Treasurers Oversight Committee, Supervisor Mills is the rep and Supervisor Callaway is the alternate?
Yes.
Yes.
The U C Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, that rests, the representative rests with the chair, and then the alternate is the vice chair. Okay. And lastly, the Upper McCollum River Watershed Authority, currently Supervisor Guaramendi is the rep and Supervisor Stopper is the alternate. This is one that Supervisor Toffanelli was willing to be the alternate.
Good with that? That's fine.
I'd like to stay.
That is all I have. So I'd need a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Oh, second.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Mariposa passes 5-0. Okay. Supervisor announcements?
In compliance with A B 1234, Chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
I have nothing to report.
Did you speak up, please?
Susan, you got that on tape, right? This is a shocker.
Mr. Toffanelli?
I have a meeting, the executive meeting for COG on Thursday, and I have a LAFCO meeting on Monday evening. That's all I have.
Mr. Stopper?
Nothing that costs the county any money.
But is there anything else you'd like to chat about?
There's quite a bit I'd like to chat about, Merida, but we'll, we'll leave that for a later hour.
Mr. Guaramendi?
Just chat about whatever you want. Thank you. First off, I have nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Okay. I have LAFCO also with Supervisor Toffanelli. But I, as you know, the census is upon us, and so there's two parts to this. One, we have a representative trying to recruit people to be census takers. And two, I feel like we need to set up a system on how we're going to manage the census when it comes back to the board. And I might have said this before, but I just think it's something we should start giving consideration to, and what the options would be on how we would manage it, because it will impact redistricting. So, that's it. So, I mean, there's all kinds of permutations. I just think we should get ahead of it. Right? If there's nothing, Al, Mr. Al, excuse me, counsel, Madam Clerk, I think, this meeting stands adjourned.